Good evening. This is the Town Council Regular Session. I'm going to call it to order. And the time is 7:30, and the date is April 23. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley?
Present.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
Four members present. Council Vice President McAtee is absent.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the Work Session of April 9, 2012.
I move approval of the Work Session, April 9, 2012.
Second.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. We also have the Regular Session, April 9, 2012.
Move approval of Regular Session, April 9.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. Lastly, we have the Closed Executive Session from April 9, 2012.
Move approval of the Closed Executive Session from April 9, 2012.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. Would any councilperson request anything removed from the Consent Agenda?
Hearing none, I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. Which brings us to licenses. This is a resolution granting a Victorlin license to Robo Rustico, LLC, doing business as Pizzeria Mezzo, 32 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakeville, Rhode Island, subject to the issuance of a retail sales tax permit by the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, application by John Russo, managing member, 168 Seaside Drive, Jamestown, Rhode Island. And this is a new license. Hello? And if you'd like to come, John, and tell us a little bit about this request, if you want to speak right into the microphone at the podium, that would be great. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, as you know, it's five years now, almost to the day, that I was here before the board. And so far, we're doing very well, as you all know. I hope I brought something to the town that the town appreciates. And I wanted to do this at some point, but I just had to wait and just get things organized before I got to this level. And I feel I'm ready for it. And here I am. It's going to be Robo Rustico, doing business as Pizzeria Mezzo, wood-fired pizza, chicchetti bar, antipasto, as in Venice. Basically, it's going to be a very simple menu. We are going to have some pasta dishes. I just actually brought in a chef from Bologna, who is going to bring in my style of cooking is more Southern Neapolitan style, which I know everybody here loves. But they do some good stuff in Emilia-Romagna. So I thought I would bring somebody in that could bring me to another dimension, another level. And we won't do much of it, but I did want to bring something else to the table. But the big thing is going to be our wood-fired grill. It's going to be natural charcoal. We're going to have grilled meats, Italian, homemade Italian sausage, sirloin bourbon tips. We're going to have very nice antipastos to go with that meal. And of course, our wood oven fired pizza. It's a recipe that's been actually in Boston for over 112 years. And I grew up in that area when I came from Italy in 1958. So I know all about that particular product. And I think some of you already have tasted some of that. So that's where I'm at. And I apologize for dressing the way I -- but I had a restaurant to build today. So here I am. And I hope you would consider me for my common rituals license.
Thank you, John. We have questions here at the table. Polly?
I think many of us are very familiar with your excellent food. And will you be doing -- you say you'll be doing pizzas and some of your other dishes this new chef will be cooking? You'll serve them right there?
Oh, yeah.
And how many spaces will you have in your restaurant?
Well, it's -- I have 30 seats, but then on all tables, some are at the bars. I'm going to have actually a pizza counter so that you'd be able to come in with kids that can watch us make the pizzas right there, sit. We have some short stools for the children. We lower the counter. We're going to have a glass front so that they can actually sit there, eat their pizza, and watch us make it at the same time. So we're going to have like six seats there. And we're going to have a beer and wine, hopefully, if I'm ordered that somewhere down the road next month. And a total of 30 seats altogether. And hopefully, do a lot of takeout.
Other questions? Jim?
John, give me an idea of your employees when you first began and what you're looking at now for total staff.
Well, I'll tell you, I employ a lot of kids from South Kingston, a lot of the high school kids. And I've had kids in the last five years go from, you know, the 10th grade to out of college now, so. And we've had a rotation of probably 75 kids between the college and mostly the South Kingston High School kids. And I hope to employ at least another five or six more kids in the new location, if not more. I'm being conservative at five or six, but I'm probably looking at more like eight to 10. Hopefully, we'll get busy enough to have a couple of hostesses waiting and helping customers come in and out. And I'll have extra help in the beginning because I know the pitfalls of opening up and everybody wanting the same thing at the same time. And unfortunately, you know, you can't do it all at the same time. So I'll have a pretty good staff and then start planning to stagger the staff a little bit. But I plan to have at least another eight to 10 kids.
That's great. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Also, too, if I could, I just got a sneak peek in the windows a week ago, and the work is just excellent.
Thank you.
Managers did a great job, and the whole idea of it, beautifully done.
Thank you.
Lends itself to eating quite a bit more than you might ordinarily order.
Any other questions here at the table? Okay, could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of License A.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very, very much.
I'm sure we will all be there.
I hope to see you all at the opening. Thank you.
Next is Communications. We have a communication dated April 4, 2012, from William K. White, informing the Town Council that he does not wish to be considered for reappointment to the Economic Development Committee. Is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We talked about this in the Work Session, and we all agree that we will send a thank-you letter to Bill White for his many years of service on the EDC, and he'll be missed.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to send a thank-you.
In a second?
In a second. Polly? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. Next is Communication C. This is a resolution adopted March 14, 2012, by the Barville Town Council in support of House Bill 2012, House 7581, an act relating to public utilities and carriers. Public transit investment that would increase funding for public bus transportation is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. Polly?
We also discussed this during the Work Session, and we certainly are all in favor of the public transportation. But we would like to find out more about this, where the money's going to come from, how it's going to come. So we're going to place this on file. I suggest I make the motion we place this on file.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. Communication H. This is a resolution adopted by the Gloucester Town Council in opposition to House Bill 2012, House 7867, an act relating to health and safety taxation. Impact fees that would create temporary reductions on building and construction permit and impact fees and sales tax on lumber and building materials is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We also discussed this at the Work Session, the cost to South Kingston, I believe, Steve mentioned, being the 50 percent area. I think there was around $150,000, Steve. Was it a dollar amount if this were to pass?
It was about, I think it was 150, 155,000 on the building permits, and I think it was around 250,000 on the impact fees as a potential in the first year alone. And this would take it out three years.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, very expensive, so I'm certainly joining the opposition with Gloucester.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. Communication J is a resolution adopted April 9, 2012, by the East Greenwich Town Council in support of Senate Bill 2012, Senate 2310, an act relating to education. School committees and superintendents that would amend the general power and duties of school committees. Add a member to the State Advisory Council on School Finances and require school districts to utilize financial and accounting software systems provided by the municipal appropriating authority is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We also talked about this at the Work Session, and I believe that we decided that we are going to be placing this on file.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries 4-0. Which brings us to L. This is a communication dated April 16 from Frank J. Quinn, tendering his resignation from the Recreation Commission, effective April 30. Is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
With this one, I also think that we should send a thank-you letter to Mr. Quinn for his service to the Recreation Commission and, you know, wish him best of luck in his relocation to Atlanta.
Second.
Motion and a second. That's ditto from all of us here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 4-0-0. And brings us to Communication P. This is a resolution adopted March 28, 2012, from the Barville Town Council in support of General Assembly Companion Bills, House 7144, and Senate 2036, Acts Relating to Towns and Cities, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust, and Companion Bills, House 7579, and Senate 2038, Acts Relating to Education, School Committees and Superintendents in Reference to OPEB Trust, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. Polly?
We also discussed this during the Work Session, and we decided we would place it on file.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. Anyone would like to come to the microphone, have any questions or comments, please state your name. Jim?
Well, I was going to ask, I won't bring it up now, but Steve, are you going to cover the CRMC meeting tomorrow night during the manager's report? Okay, all right. Wait till then.
Please come to the mic.
Hi, I'm Deb Burgner, Mattoonik resident. I'm here tonight because I'm wondering, I learned on Friday that the most current rules of conduct adopted by the Town Council were passed in 2008, 2010. So I'm here wondering, and to clarify, the meeting on March 23, when some rules of decorum were discussed, that was a communication item that was passed, and there are no official rules other than the rules of conduct established in 2008, 2010. So in that document, there is no mention of texting, there's no mention of the no-names policy that has been enforced. And I'm just questioning why there is such an interest in stifling conversation, discourse, or dissenting opinions. And I feel that it's encroaching on people's rights to speak freely.
I think that if you go back and listen to the minutes of that meeting, we didn't clarify them as code of conduct. That would have actually required a vote. We took no vote on that. The discussion, if you look at the verbiage that was used, it was ground rules.
Correct.
So the texting has not been adopted in the code of conduct. And I will defer to legal counsel, or Steve. With us having rules of, rules here, such as ground rules, they don't necessarily need to be adopted in the code of conduct. So please feel free.
My recollection was that the council, as a consensus, agreed on those provisions that were talked about that evening. They were not incorporated into the rules of conduct. I'm not sure if I understand what the question is. Is the question that if they haven't been adopted in the rules of conduct, that they can't be enforced?
My question was that the rules of conduct that you're using are based on that 2008, 2010 document. What was said at that meeting, that those were the ground rules, I agree, but that then they applied equally to the council as to the public. I did watch the tape several times and transcribe what was said because it does come to the point of First Amendment rights about speaking. And I raised the point that the no-names policy that has been established does not allow for free speech in this chamber.
If I can just further elaborate, I think the no-name rule came in effect prior to that, Ms. Burgner. That has been back, I think, years prior to the former chair.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
But it's not rooted in a policy. It's not presented in an official document.
We did, right. We have not reviewed the code of conduct officially. We have not taken any official votes. It is just procedure and process, the way that this Town Council would like to set up rules. So if it's interfering with any kind of freedom of speech, you know, please jump in. We have a legal counsel here.
I question, my question would be, is why is someone able to use any other name except for the five councilmember's name when speaking? For example, people may come up and say a comment about the governor or the president, and those names are acceptable, but to have any comments which include the Town Council members' names, that's precluded. And that, to me, infringes upon First Amendment rights.
Well, first of all, I'm unfamiliar, I wasn't here during that session, so I'm unfamiliar with the details of the discussion.
The no-name from Town Council actually goes back to years ago.
I do recall that, I have quite a history with you, as you know, and I do recall that going back. And I think it was just a matter of them trying to establish a decorum for the Town Council meetings in which everyone could be free to speak, but not to attack or somehow evade the discussion by putting the blame on someone else, so to speak. I think that was the intention. Now, recently, I know there was an article in the paper, and I have to admit, I didn't look at it in great detail, but I know that the council did have a discussion, and once again, were trying to address the decorum in this chamber. To what extent that infringes upon free speech, I guess we'll have to wait and see, to see how that is effective. That will be a question with respect to enforcement.
With all due respect, when a citizen is attacked for speaking, and their name is used, and then precluded from using any other names, it does seem a bit unfair. It does seem a bit that the taxpayer who's up here speaking is not able to speak freely. And I'm not saying disrespectfully, I'm saying speak respectfully. So I question why that continues this no-name policy, which is not even a policy, it's just accepted practice. I question that practice. I question, I question the texting practice. If it is not part of an official document, and it was not presented, it was not adopted, it wasn't on the agenda, then why is that, why is that an issue? I feel that you're trying to control citizens' rights and freedoms.
What I would request is that, and I know, Steve, this is, I know that you're quite busy, but if at some point, we could look at the history of what Ms. Burgner's concerns are with using anyone's name, and look at the issue that maybe that was, and I hate to have you do this work. The texting, I do not believe, can we have a legal counsel opinion on the texting? Is that taking away from people's freedom of speech when we are asking for people to stop texting during meetings?
Glad to look into that.
Thank you.
Because you are allowed to use a computer, correct?
We don't have any computers here at the table.
But computers are allowed in the audience.
For, I believe, our media does use computers. I don't believe there's anyone else that has ever come to Town Council meeting to use a computer.
So, an iPad, any other, I'm just trying to flesh out, could I show up with an iPad? Could anyone show up with any other? It seems to be quite focused on texting as the issue. And to me, there are many other ways to communicate, and I think it's very narrow, and it's very strange in its focus.
I would say if there were any complaints with somebody using a computer back and forth with communications, and somebody felt aggrieved, that they were distracted, then we would look at that. So I know that there were concerns brought to the table with different texting that was happening in the town chambers. Even prior to that, there was other issues brought. So we didn't include it as part of the code of conduct, but we have agreed upon decorum in this town chamber, and that's where we're at. But we have our legal opinion, and we will have them do the work to find out if this is any First Amendment rights that has been violated.
Thank you.
So just the two questions, I want to make sure. Texting in the town chambers, is that a violation of the First Amendment rights? Is that?
That wasn't my question, but I think it is infringing upon any individual's rights.
You know what would really be helpful, or maybe if you could put the two questions to the town manager, then we can have our legal opinion.
Well, my questions were that there is no public document precluding that. There is, there is, it's not prohibited. There's no public official document on that, so.
We have set up a process here in the town chambers. There will be no texting.
And I think that the rules do not state any of the no-names things, and I question that as a citizen of being able to speak openly and address any issue I want. It seems a little absurd that you cannot say any town councilmember's name. Oh, wait, I might be able to give a compliment, but I certainly can't give any sort of criticism or feedback. That's what I find to be very strange.
Dale, do you have the two questions that, I mean, I've asked Ms. Burgner to put it in writing, but I don't, she hasn't agreed to that. So do you have the questions that we can pass on to her? Do you feel good?
I would be.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I have just a few announcements. I just wanted to say that I had the great opportunity to attend the grand opening of Wilford Junction today, and it was quite an exciting event. And tomorrow night, we have the second public hearing with Coastal Resources Management Council. It's at 6 o'clock, and I just want to make sure that people know that it's at South Kingston High School Auditorium. And I mentioned at the last Town Council meeting, and I did not have the date, I just wanted to reiterate that the South County Hospital race is April 28, 8:30, and the race starts at 9 o'clock. And I believe that we do have some Boy Scouts in the audience. If so, give me a wave and maybe tell us what troop you're from. Hello?
Hi, I'm Max Hempe, and I'm from Troop 1 Kingston.
I'm Liam Haggerty, and I'm also from Troop 1 Kingston.
Welcome. Just wanted to acknowledge that you're here, and I'm sure you're working on a merit badge. Yeah, I believe I'll be going to the Kingston Congregation on Wednesday to work with, I think, 17 to 20 scouts on the citizenship and nation badge. So welcome to the town chambers.
Yeah, that's what we're working on.
You're working on that as well. All right. Any other comments here at the table? Okay, which brings us to the Town Manager's Report.
Addressing Jim's question, I think Ella has already addressed that. Tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at the high school will be the, the agenda that's been set by the Coastal Resource Management Council has two specific issues. One is a petition for a motion to reconsider the vote that was taken last Tuesday on the town's application for the sheet pile installation on the 200-foot stretch of Mattoonik Beach Road. That's listed on their agenda as the first item of business. Second item of business is the town's application that was filed in December of last year, which would seek the reclassification of approximately 1,400 linear feet of property in Mattoonik from a headland to a man-made shoreline. Both of those are under consideration for tomorrow night by Coastal Council. The motion for reconsideration was filed through our attorney with a letter that I had prepared to Coastal. The reason that the letter for reconsideration was submitted is because we do believe that the town's application for a special exception, that we've met the terms and conditions within the Red Book for that special exception, and we've reiterated that in the letter. I think the broader question that needs to be addressed is that if, in fact, there is no other solutions available for the protection of public safety for access and egress to that Mattoonik neighborhood of 240 homes, how do we be able, how are we able to provide public health and safety assurances? The only thing we see that's a possibility is that we have to allow the road to be destroyed to then apply for an emergency ascent to fix the road. That makes little sense. Our objective would be to have the reconsideration, be able to move forward with proper design, and have those design plans reviewed through the Coastal staff, and the installation to occur this year. Without that installation occurring this year, we're at the mercy of any storm. As noted last week, we lost between 15 and 20 feet of headland in the area where that 200-foot sheet pile would be installed in the last nine months. We are within five feet of the property right-of-way for the town from Mattoonik Beach Road. And within that right-of-way is a 12-inch water main, which provides service to 1,666 residence units to the west, and provides fire services for all of those units. So we think this is a very serious public safety issue. It's one that we had anticipated obtaining proper ascent at the last meeting, and we're asking that that matter be reconsidered at this time. The second application dealing with the reclassification, we also see as a necessity to be able to -- provide those private property owners, 11 of them, to be able to provide a uniform engineering solution that would allow them to protect their property from further loss. When 70% of the area that's in question already has some type of revetment or armor stone, it certainly doesn't make sense to call this a coastal headland and bluff. It is a man-made structure. So those are the two applications that we'll go forward with. We had asked CRMC, and they agreed to bring the meeting into South Kingston at the high school to provide adequate space for the residents to be present and to be heard. So that's where we'll be at six o'clock tomorrow night.
Kathy?
Steve, when you're talking about the 1,666 units, we're talking not just going from Ocean Mist past that, we're talking, that water main comes in from the opposite direction and feeds some of those other...
That's correct. The water main comes, our source and supply is on Tucker Town Road, it comes down Old Post Road, parallels on Route One, and goes into the Succotash Road to the water tank at that location. It then travels all the length of Succotash Road to the State Beach, follows the headland of the beach, and comes in through Mattoonik Beach Road. If that water line were severed, any of the properties west of where the severance point would be on Mattoonik Beach Road would lose water service. The only service that we would have available is the 400,000 gallons in tank reserve at Mortucket, but we would not be able to replenish that, and that would not provide us for the fire protection that we would need for that entire area, or the drinking supply for that area. So there's a twofold issue that's here that has to be addressed. We can understand the concerns that people have expressed on both of the petitions that have been filed, but we are out of choices in terms of being able to do what the town's responsibility is, and the state's responsibility is, to ensure safe passage and public safety protection for neighborhoods, particularly one with 240 homes. So where we stand today, we do not have the approval, we've asked respectfully for reconsideration, we'll see what type of reaction that request receives tomorrow evening.
And, because I just wanted to point out, because people think that it's just that area of Mattoonik, it's a much bigger situation.
No, it would be the entire Seltzer Water System, because we can, the system is valved off, and we would still be able to provide water service from East Mattoonik State Beach up to the Succotash Tank, but that would be the only area that would be safe for water service at that point.
Obviously, it's just a huge concern for us as the council, I don't think, I think some people don't realize the scope of how big this could be, and just think that it's just the property owner in that quadrant of the town. It's a much bigger deal than that.
And within the special exception, the requirements ought to provide a review of all reasonable alternatives. We believe that we've provided a review of all reasonable. If we want to get to unreasonable ones, the sky's the limit. Makes little sense for us to look at destroying the Mattoonik Beach area in residential structures or within the summer colonies as a means of solving a problem, which will then be the same problem 10 years from now as the erosion continues.
And then I know I called today your office just to ask, and I know Vin Murray went down there and looked at it, because it's to the point with the rain falling last night like it did, I'm lying in bed thinking, I hope that road isn't caving in or undermining. That's at three in the morning, this is what I'm thinking about. That's how much of a concern, I'm sure some of the other council persons heard the rain last night, and you had a norrista coming in, you had waves coming, I mean, it's just a question of time that we're gonna get the phone call that, you know, we've broken through, or there's no access over there. Luckily, Vin said it wasn't that bad last night, and I was relieved to hear it, but I wish I got better sleep last night, and that's what's in the back of our mind when we're dealing with this, this whole issue, and just how surprising the response was at that meeting Tuesday night, so, thank you, Steve.
Any other questions, Jim?
Yes, Steve, did I understand that the Coastal Council has recently approved a couple of revetment walls? Wasn't there?
They have a petition under consideration, which is quite similar on Block Island, and I believe that they have provided either the ascent or are considering that ascent still. I'm not sure what the reasonable alternatives were that were considered there. We are reviewing that.
Okay, I didn't know if there was also one on the land side over in Little Compton, Tiverton, was there another one?
We don't have record of that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Just a second, add on to that, how recent was that, in the Block Island one, Steve? Do you have?
I don't have the detail on it, and hopefully, if we can get the reconsideration in place, it's not an issue that we'll have to address.
Okay. Thank you, any other further comments? Okay, thank you, Steve, which brings us to the Town Solicitors' Report.
Yes, your report.
Thank you. Appointments, we don't have any, we usually wait till we have a full council, which brings us to New Business Item D. This is a resolution authorizing the extension of a ward of bid originally granted on February 28th, 2005, and extended on March 27th, 2006, February 12th, 2007, February 25th, 2008, September 22nd, 2008, and September 14th, 2009, to MHQ Municipal Supply, 401 Elm Street, Marlborough, Mass. for soft body armor through December 31st, 2013, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the original bid specifications, as modified by the vendor on March 23rd, 2012, to reflect manufacturer upgrades to the original model vest and the unit prices stated below. And the prices are listed, and as further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the Town Manager dated April 2nd, 2012, and entitled, "Recommendation for Additional Extension of Bid Award Soft Body Armor." Steve?
The continuation of the bid award provides the opportunity to continue with uniformity in the armoring of the Police Department. We also looked at what the prices were on the same equipment that was bid through the state of Massachusetts under their master price agreement. The prices that have been offered to us over the term of the extension would be $5 per unit less than what the contract price is under the NPA en masse. A number of departments use different types of vests. Vests usually are replaced on a five- to a seven-year schedule. We expect over the life of the extension that we would see the potential for 25 vests to be purchased through the department. Also, as noted in Chief Vesby's memorandum, the vests are paid for really through three funding sources. 50% comes through the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, which is a federal grant, and the other 50%, 33.34% of the value is paid for by the town, and the remainder would be paid for either through the IBPO slash the employee themselves. So it's a shared services program, which we believe that the vests that have been used by the department are in the department's best interests, and also ones that are supported by the IBPO, and I support the chief's recommendation for the extension.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of New Business Item D.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero zero. New Business Item G. This is a resolution authorizing the extension of an award of contract originally granted on June 9th, 2008, and extended on October 11th, 2011, and January 9th, 2012, to Feral Gas 100 Money Road, Apache, Rhode Island, for liquid propane maintenance service and associated materials according to the terms and conditions of the state of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement, from March 31st, 2012, to June 30th, 2012, at the following price schedule, and it is 22 cents a gallon, labor rate is $70 an hour, and parts and discount is 10%. And is further described in a memorandum from the Financial Controller to the Town Manager dated April 18th, 2012, and entitled, "Recommendation for Award of Propane."
Recommendation is to continue under the master price agreement that the state has, their extension is between March 31st and June 30th.
Thank you.
The only price that's listed there is the increment price. The increment price is really the transportation costs on a per gallon basis. The rest of the cost associated per gallon is based on the market, which goes up and down, and with gas, it's actually been going down constantly, which is a good thing.
Thank you. Motion, please.
Motion to approve New Business Item G.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And New Business Item H is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Blum Chaprio and Company, PC, 29 South Main Street, West Hartford, Connecticut, for audit services for a three-year period, subject to annual review at the rate of $45,000 for fiscal year 2012, $46,000 for fiscal year 2013, and $47,000 for fiscal year 2014, for a total contract amount not to exceed $138,000, as further described in a memorandum from the Financial Director to the Town Manager dated April 17th, 2012, and entitled, "Request for Proposals: Professional Audit Services Bid Reference Number SK0002FD."
The memorandum provided by the Finance Director provides the review of the four proposals that were submitted to the town for consideration for the audit services for the next three years. Based on the Finance Director's review, and he walks in the memo through the four different areas of consideration and ranking of the four applications, his recommendation is to go with the lowest qualified bidder, which is Blum Shapiro and Company. The firm is located out of West Hartford, Connecticut. This is the first time we'll be seeing audit services by a major firm outside of Rhode Island. However, the reviews that have been conducted by the Finance Director with Connecticut municipalities that have used this firm for their services have received high marks. We have also submitted for review and consideration the appointment of Blum Shapiro to the Auditor General, who has approved the award of program as presented. Answer any questions the council may have on the matter.
Questions here for Steve?
If not, then I move New Business Resolution H for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero zero. At this time, does anyone have any final questions before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries, and the time is 8:10.